Okay, you're gonna go over the rules?
Rules are first to buzz. Oh, if you miss it, I guess we go to the other team to have a chance to answer. And then we'll go back and forth until someone gets it right.
Do we have like a time for discussion and then go, or is it right away?
No, you can discuss.
Can we phone a friend?
No. No, you don't have that.
I'm gonna call Tim.
Can we discuss before the first buzz has been buzzed? I didn't realize that we could from past years. Although Dr. Limbry doesn't give us a chance. But we could confer. Okay, that's good too. You go ahead, Tim, you do your own thing.
Might need to manage this progress. Should we test the buzzers?
Yeah, there's...
Oh, here we go.
Okay.
Hard to tell, and they don't light up. Okay, first question, are you all ready?
Yeah.
Alright guys.
So many people to watch.
For yourselves.
First question. This lantern jaw family occupied the seat of the Holy Roman Empire from 1438 to 1740. They also produced kings and emperors of Bohemian England.
Let's discuss it.
I love you, I love you. Quick, discuss it. No, I think you have to have the answer before you ring the bell. You just hold on, we'll get there in a minute.
Yeah, the ring of the...
The name of the king or the family?
The family.
Uh, I don't know. Caesar.
Do it, just go, yeah, go for it.
The Habsburgs?
That is correct.
Alex!
What did you say?
The Habsburgs.
Habsburgs.
Close, don't worry.
The Holy, see, you didn't say Holy Roman Empire.
Oh, what?
Did you?
Some days I remember.
This acronym describes a technique which was, which uses sound propagation to navigate, communicate, and detect...
Sonar.
Correct, sonar.
I had that too, thank you.
Look at him hovering over his button.
What does zip, as in zip code, stand for?
Henry?
I think I know what the C in the P are.
Did we hit it first? Well, hit the damn thing.
I don't know.
You have a C in the P.
I don't know. Um, like zonal international post or something?
Nope. Quiz Bowl kids?
Good try.
No? Okay, could be post.
I definitely not international.
He's gotta be post, right?
Internal?
I don't think I should do it. I don't have a clue.
Nope, time, okay. It is zone improvement plan.
What? Makes no sense.
Okay, next one. What element of the periodic table is named for a married couple?
This one?
Named for a married couple.
Where's Cozoid? He was studying these.
Say, can you repeat the question?
Deuterium.
No, that is incorrect.
What, can you repeat the question?
Yes. What element of the periodic table is named for a married couple?
I don't think it's specifically a married couple.
Are there any puries?
Is it a specific married couple, or is it like in general, what a married couple is called?
I think it must be a specific married couple. I think it must be like a curies or something.
You can just guess, because they don't have anything.
Yes, yes, your mic was on.
Say it louder.
Do you have an answer?
Yeah, go.
Doesn't make it... Uh, curanium.
Curium?
Curium, curium, that's what I said.
The answer is curium.
Rock star down there.
Next one. What was the first soft drink to be consumed in outer space?
Cola?
I need to be more specific. What did you say? He said cola.
Pepsi?
I'm sorry?
Coca-Cola?
Correct. Um, John F. Kennedy was the youngest elected president, but who was the youngest appointed president? Younger than Kennedy.
Teddy.
Theodore Roosevelt?
That is correct, Theodore Roosevelt.
You redeemed yourself.
Kennedy was 43 and he was 42.
I hate being wrong though.
Which is larger, the US gallon or the Imperial gallon?
US gallon.
That is incorrect. Yeah, the US gallon is 128 fluid ounces and the Imperial is 160. Who designed the glass pyramid at the Louvre?
What?
The Louvre in Paris, the glass pyramid.
I feel like this is the last question. Or like an MCAS.
Le capusae.
No, I'm sorry.
French sculptors or creators.
Go on, you guys.
Nope.
Yeah, I have no clue.
Time?
I can't name anything.
I am pain.
No.
Of course, sip of my tongue.
Developed in 1957, this font is mostly utilized by professionals in the publishing and web design industry. And the subject...
Futura?
No, I'm sorry. And the subject of a 2007 documentary.
I know this.
I think I missed the second word.
Do it, Henry, do it.
Times New Roman?
Nope.
That's what I was gonna say.
We'll go back to you. I'll say it again, developed in...
It's Connie Sands.
It is not.
Garamon.
Okay, we'll be all night. It's not Calibri, nope.
Uh, can you repeat the question?
Yes, okay. Developed in 1957, this font is mostly utilized by professionals in the publishing and web design industry. And the subject of a 2007 documentary.
Helvetica?
Helvetica.
Yeah, you're just going down on your computer.
Uh, what are catfish missing that most other fish have?
Bones.
No.
Collage.
It can't be...
No, it can't be.
It'd be like a pectoral fin.
No, not us.
Their turn.
Don't wanna get penalized.
Take a random fin. Pectoral can't be right, that's pretty human.
Dorsal fin.
Incorrect. Brian, can you buzz it?
Swim bladder.
Does that count? Oh, I thought you buzzed in when they were...
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, good.
Go ahead, Mrs. Butler.
Gills!
No, want to go back?
Do you wanna steal swim bladder?
My husband's bladder.
Um, swim bladder?
Nope. Is that what you call it?
Yeah.
Scales.
Oh, okay.
There you are, they're smooth.
What fruit is affected by a gray type of fungus known as noble rot?
What, fur?
Type of fruit?
Fruit.
Fur?
It's a gray fungus known as noble rot.
Like grapes or something.
I told you say something.
Oranges.
No, I'm sorry.
Grapes. Sorry. So do we wanna go with grapes?
Just go for it.
Yeah, just try.
Pedro? It is grape. In the novel Lolita, what is Lolita's actual first name?
Oh my gosh.
Matt was reading this.
I know.
That's gonna kill me.
Not gonna pretend, how far behind do you think we are?
Stop thinking about that right now.
Oh, gosh.
No? Give up? Dolores.
Oh, nevermind. That's probably symbolic.
Uh, what type of yarn is made from rabbit hair?
Angkor, oh no, Angkor?
It is Angkor.
I got one finally after six years.
What is the score? Who's keeping score?
The score is five for the Quiz Bowl kids and four. In Scrabble, what point value does the letter Z have?
Yes.
Oh, I think it was on.
Ten.
That's correct. Have a tie.
Okay, we got more momentum.
Uh, Mexico has two southern friends, one is Guatemala, what's the other?
Belize.
That is correct.
Nice, Skylar. She's not even in Spanish.
This disputed republic's, uh, this disputed republic's southern border is Macedonia. It's officially recognized by 100 foreign nations. Kosovo is correct. Nice.
Good job.
Uh, if North Dakota is to my north, what state is to myself?
If North Dakota is to my north...
Iowa? No.
Sorry.
I don't know the state, I'm sorry.
All right, back.
Oh, we're back, okay, wait, let's not brush it. Yeah, I was gonna say Nebraska, I don't know where you got it. It was south of South Dakota.
Nebraska is correct. I come from a tree, I'm neither fruit nor seed, you can put me in your tea, and I am a repellent to ants. Who am I?
Saint John's.
Pedro.
A leaf.
Honey?
Nope.
Lemon?
Nope.
Wait, can you repeat the question?
Yes. I come from a tree, I'm neither fruit nor seed, you can put me in your tea, and I am a repellent to ants.
Put it in your tea, I was just gonna say leaves, because they're hard to use.
It's our turn.
Okay, go for it.
Saint John's War?
Wait, didn't they already go?
It's our turn, isn't it?
You guys did honey. Saint John's War?
Nope, sorry. Last chance, last call. Nope, cinnamon.
Oh, I don't put that in my tea.
What country produces Angostura bitters?
What?
Say that one more time.
What country produces Angostura bitters?
Peru?
Nope, sorry.
I don't know what, what is that? Yeah, I don't know. I don't even know what that is. No.
Anyone?
The Bahamas.
Nope.
Cuba. I don't know.
Okay, um, you were close, Dr. Graves, Trinidad and Tobago. Um, this largest living organism can be seen from outer space and is located in the world's most protected marine...
What is blue way?
Area.
Great Barrier Reef.
Great Barrier Reef is correct.
That was awesome.
Good job.
Name the little African-American girl in Norman Rockwell's famous painting, The Problem We All Live With.
I'm still waiting for ancient history.
Name of the little African-American girl in Norman Rockwell's famous painting, The Problem We All Live With.
First and last?
Nope. Ruby Bridges.
Oh, wait.
Okay, in 2000, which US state became the first to offer civil unions to same-sex couples?
California?
Nope, sorry.
That's a good guess.
That's a good guess.
The first state to legalize gay marriage.
Oh, I have no clue.
No, civil union.
Oh, civil union, sorry.
Civil union?
I feel like I knew this. I think it's a bit of a surprise.
Massachusetts.
No, no.
We have it, but do they have to guess now if we buzz in?
I think we should guess, but let's...
Can narrow it down, it's not Alabama. Won't be Mississippi.
Wait, just guess some.
New York.
Nope, sorry, Vermont.
Oh, you said it! But it wasn't fair, so that's good.
This award is issued annually to the author of the most distinguished contribution to American literature for children.
We had that question.
Newberry Award.
That's correct.
Good job.
Are there enough questions left that we have a prayer of catching on?
Yes, I tried to pick ones that were, that I thought, you know...
No ancient history.
Uh, no ancient history, I'm sorry, I just heard you talk about that. Uh, known as the anti-Oscars, these are awarded to the worst films of the year.
Last verse.
Correct.
I told you last night!
Um, what do you call someone who studies bugs and insects? What, Dr. Graves?
Entomologist.
Entomologist.
Get, go away.
There's only four left, only four left. This 3D combination puzzle invented in 1972.
Rubik's Cube.
Rubik's Cube.
Were these questions posted somewhere?
Issued on January 1st, 1999, this currency is the seventh strongest in the world.
Seventh.
Seventh.
Uh, the Euro, Euro.
Correct, Euro. This Apollo mission was the final mission before the 1969 moon landing.
Star Trek!
Wait, can you repeat the question?
Yes, this Apollo mission was the final mission before the 1969 moon landing.
I don't know. Just pick a number. Low. I don't know, it has to be below 15.
Apollo.
I'd say it's like seven or five. Don't listen to me, don't listen to me.
Okay, let's say... Okay, let's go with...
No, don't pick one.
Time.
Time.
It's not, that doesn't work, or...
Can we guess?
Do we try? Okay. Let's go with Apollo 5.
Incorrect, I'm with Apollo 10.
Oh, wow.
Okay, here's the last, here's the last one. From what nation did the US purchase the Virgin Islands in 1917?
Denmark.
Correct, only that was...
I didn't know.
I'm pulling down.
Uh, we have a score of 13 for the Quiz Bowlers and 7.
Well done, guys, well done. So the admin's coming up right now?
That's all, that was one round, yeah.
Oh, you really, come on now.
In the past, they used to have two teams.
Yeah? Well, they're just, they're warmed up now, they're ready to...
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
How did I not know this?
You, you missed out.
I'm sorry.
Collecting the bucks.
That was gonna happen.
We're done?
Thank you. We're done.
I know that.
Thank you.
Significant amount.
That was fun.
I'm not sure of the selection of course, that's part.
I'm good, I'm nervous. I gotta question why this year.
We gotta go over the ones we missed.
We gotta get together and swap next year.
How the bun begins.
We can't get together and swap, so you can move.
No, are you gonna stay down there, Mike?
That's what we call in auspices. I'm fine.
Quite comfortable, he's very happy.
Okay, for the first time they won, and, uh, more power to them, but next year will come. Maybe we can get a better selection of school committee members.
Ouch!
Wow!
Throw your team under the bus. Sour grapes. Committee discussion and votes to take. Uh, discussion and vote on superintendent finals. I think everybody has been alerted that one of our, um, four withdrew today. So, does somebody wanna open up the discussion on the three?
I'm not sure the audience is all aware. Can we not tell them?
Well, again, Mr. Buck withdrew.
Gentleman from Missouri withdrew.
Doctor Buck. Okay, so let's talk about the other three. I'll lay it off. I interviewed some people about Glenn Roberts.
Robbins.
Robbins. Southern nights gone. And they were very supportive of his candidacy. I spoke in particular to one woman that worked with him for one year when he was, um, meant, being mentored for superintendent's position. And she said, said he was very energetic, very positive, very, um... He was digital superintendent of the year, involved his students in presentations before a variety of groups. I think some of us have been privileged to hear that he also set up the cameras in the school and did everything else that should please Diane. So I am very enthusiastic about Mr. Robbins, and I think he is where the site visits. Anybody else having any thoughts?
I am concerned, I agree, wholeheartedly, he's energetic. He certainly would be fun to have around, and he seems to believe in doing things. My concerns lie with a couple of facts. He's from a very small school district. It's, I'm not even sure it's half the size of ours. I took a quick look at the number of teachers, it's maybe half what we have. It's only elementary and middle school, there's no high school.
He does have high school experience, though.
Not as a superintendent, and I think it's only his second year on the job too, in a very small school, so I'm quite hesitant.
Zona?
I feel like he's a little slick, um, maybe a little too slick. I didn't get, feel like we got any in-depth answers from him, you know, except for when it came to the tech side of it. He is not one of the names that I would, was planning to put forward, I'll put it that way. And I think it's important that, um, in, in the state of what we're in right now and what we've accomplished, I think it's important to have someone with some Massachusetts knowledge, and that, that's a huge concern for me. HR experience, things like that.
Only two people from Massachusetts. Would you recommend bringing them forward?
I would, just, I would recommend only one, there's only one that I would recommend at this point, one that I feel brings a lot to the table. Um, I think there are some, the minor concerns that I have, and they're minor, I think that we could work with, but the experience that she brings is, is quite extensive, and she's been very successful. I did the references on her, I even spoke to the chair of the school committee, and, um, quite impressive. And one of the questions in our package was, you know, to ask if, if it came back to it, for whatever reason, would you hire him or her back? And she said without question, so...
You're gonna tell us who?
Oh, sorry, Susan, Susan Katsa. Katsa. To.
I'm disappointed, I, um, the candidate that I planned to bring forward tonight was Dr. Buck, so at this point, I'm not prepared to move anyone forward.
Pauline?
Um, having the whole afternoon to think about this, um, I too would have brought forward Dr. Buck, and I think at this point, not feeling, um, 100% with, with Mr. Robbins. And I, and I went through all of comments again today, so that I can, and I think we spent the time, and people spent time giving their input, and from what I get from this, um, I think that we should, my recommendation would be to reopen the search, um, because I don't feel at this point we have a candidate to put forward. I'm not recommending reopen it right now, but I don't, I don't think we have a candidate to put forward, in my opinion.
Well, there was everybody else. I had a major concern about Susan, and that was her wanting to have a look at the community school, to see whether it might be best operated by the town. I am inalterably opposed to that, I think our community school is awesome. I went through their winter, spring offering catalog again a couple of days ago, and what these people do is just beyond the, and they belong as a part of the school, so it's something I would not wanna look at. I, I wouldn't, I can't support her, I'm on the side, I'm sorry to have to say, of restarting the search. Not this spring, but in the fall, which means we would have to find someone to sit in that chair for another year, admittedly.
Okay, but you are not...
I'm not in favor of Susan.
We do not have three votes for anyone personally.
No. It would seem not.
And are no conversions in process?
Listen, I, I'm trying very hard to have an open mind, if you have more that you wanna say about Glenn, please do, but...
Well, I think categorizing...
I just think he's too green.
Well, I think he's got a lot of experience, this woman that had worked with him for a year mentoring him, thought that he would be a tremendous candidate. He's got a lot of energy, he's got a lot of abilities, I mean, I think before, my opinion would be to perhaps do site visits on these two people and see if anybody's mind gets changed.
I just wonder if site visits aren't gonna do what, I just wonder if they're possibly a waste of time, unless we, you know, we, we talk, what, what are we gonna get out of doing a site visit? And who are we gonna do the site visit with? Them? And are we only gonna see what they want us to see? What, what would be the real purpose of the site visit? And what do we expect to gain from that?
Well, I think you get a different perspective, I mean, I think walking the halls might give you a different perspective. Uh, I think in, speaking to parents, speaking, you know, not everybody's gonna be selected, I mean, certainly that's always a question, you know, because if I were looking for the position, I'd make sure you weren't talking to anybody I had offended recently. Uh, but I think it can be done in a somewhat equitable fashion, so that you, you get a better feeling for the person. I think...
You know... To do a site visit and then not pick that person up, what's that gonna do for him, him or her? In their environment?
Well, I mean, I think if they wanna be in the search, they've committed to the fact that they are going to be visible, and it's like love, you know, sometimes you win and sometimes you lose. And I think the site visit can give you sort of a different outlook on somebody. I think, I think Glenn, in my perception, talks like he's from New Jersey, speaks pretty fast, but I think he's done a lot and accomplished a lot. That's, and I understand where Steve is coming from, because certainly he's at an elementary, middle school right now, but he has been at a 2,700 student high school. So he has had experience in a variety of different areas. He's very well respected by other educators, being, um, the...
Strikes me that the site visits are, are gonna be dog and pony shows. I don't think that we can be accused of not doing our due diligence, asking those 10 questions and getting answers to them, and having read them countless times. I've done more reading in the last few weeks than I have since I was in law school, and none of these people are jumping off the page at me, and I want them to jump off the page at me. I also want, and I don't know how realistic this is, having not done it before, I want us to be unanimous in our decision. Um, I think it's important to the community, to our kids, and even especially to whoever gets selected to know that they have the support of the entire school committee. And I liked Glenn, I felt like he had done a bit too much homework on us, so that he could be a bit personal. I attended the four walkarounds, although I didn't do all the walking around part. I did attend the chat sessions, and he had something that he knew about everybody to make them feel like he had done that part of his homework. And that may be what Zona meant by a bit too slick, you know? So I, I can't come around to him.
I'm thinking about the level of professionalism and experience that Susan would bring to our district. I think a, a lot of what people are weighing on is maybe her personality didn't come across as warm and fuzzy, but I have to wonder if that's something that the island of New Kentucky could work on, and, and she could gain that piece that she, to me, is somewhat lacking. What I like is her HR experience, her union experience, her ELL experience, her special needs experience, and the fact that she, you know, is big on getting our team professional development, and, and making that better, and I, and I'm hoping, you know, she could, um... And I, and I'm hoping, you know, she could bring a lot to the table in, in that respect, in her experience. I mean, the one thing that, in the conversation I've had with the references, is that she will see a project through from A to Z, which is good. She does get out and about and, and meets with the family. She is actually the community contact for the school, and things like that. So to me, she brings the whole picture. Now, I know everybody else is not sold on that, because I'm the only one that brought her name forward. And, and that's fine, but I'd like to see her stay in the running, if that's at all possible, because I think we're gonna miss out on a real, real opportunity that we in our district can use. You know, Mike, he's been here for nine years, and what he brought to the table is phenomenal. No one's gonna be able to beat that, in my opinion. However, that we need to maintain a sense of continuity. We don't, we, for someone to come in, and, and I know it's hard, and have a huge learning curve just to get familiar with the mass general law and, and everything that entails, in the middle of, you know, you know, staffing changes and whatever else that could be going on. Those are things that we need to think about for our organization right now. It's, what do we need right now? What do we need in the future? And I think that's something that she, she answers for us.
Can I, can I ask a question? What would the committee feel if we felt like we could come to an agreement that we could bring two candidates back here, not to go on a site visit, to bring two candidates back? Do we think that we would gain any more information? Do we think doing another public forum?
I would ask our expert, Jim.
You having a second round of interviews?
Yeah.
That's your prerogative, you can do that.
I, I just think that, you know, if we, we narrowed it down and then made our questions specific to what we've read, give, again, the community another opportunity to meet the candidate.
I feel like we offered that with the questions, the extension of the questions and the opportunity to learn more. I really don't wanna, I don't want to continue the process.
You know, I almost agree with everything Zona says, except for naming the person. I think we need someone better than the three remaining candidates. I too was prepared to put forward Dr. Buck tonight. And the text message from one of my colleagues that I needed to check my email came as a shock. Not a huge surprise. He's far away, but he, to me, he was the outstanding candidate in the pack. And the three others are just okay.
I think everybody brings something really unique and amazing. Dr. Buck was that person for me who encompassed everything that I felt we needed as a district. And I don't feel comfortable continuing to look down that line.
Well, and we've gotten reams of comments. And I think it's fair to say, without naming names needless to say, that there was a trend in the comments. That was the sixty pages. We had reams more material from certain candidates. I just don't feel there's more to get from having them back here again. I am not happy. Please don't misunderstand. I'm not happy about the possibility of going through this again. And it does mean having to find an interim superintendent, because it's too late in the year to start again. I hope you can all agree on that. So it would be a process that we would run again next year, hoping to get, if I can put it this way, someone more like Dr. Buck than we've seen in the other candidates. Again, Susan still has not been a superintendent, nor has Beth, we haven't even talked about Beth, so I assume she's out of the running. We have one person here who's favorable to Susan. We have another who's favorable to Glenn, and three who are over the fence.
Well, since I wasn't able to obtain a conversion from any of you...
Would you like a motion?
I think we probably need a motion to...
Make a motion that we reset the superintendent search for, for, for summer of 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Five zip, five zip, reset.
We just want to make sure we get this right.
No, I think, I think that there were issues, I think there were issues with all of the candidates, I felt. I think that, I mean, I think from being out of state, I mean, I will remind you that Mike did come from cow country up north.
Mike's the exception. You know, you can get, you can get, you can get a sense, a feel for a person and what they're capable of. And I didn't get that sense from the two out-of-staters. I just didn't...
I mean, I think we all, we couldn't come to a consensus on it, and so I think...
Can we come to this consensus, though? Thank you all for your participation, all the comments we got formally and informally. The interest that the community has shown is impressive. Sorry we have to put you through this again, but I hope you'll be a part of it again.
All right.
So having done that, and losing the quiz ball, we'll vote to adopt and authorize the school committee fiscal year 2020 budget education appropriation in Article Eight.
I would like to let you know what I'm going to do with that. I cannot and will not vote in favor of what we have before us at the moment. I'm still dissatisfied with the town percentages that they offered to us. We had to take things off our list that I did not want to see go. I'm not going to vote against it. I will abstain if we cannot get more from the town. And this, in the past, they've come up with this much and that much. I, I don't believe that their answer to my question about why we got two and a half percent less than the other departments was reasonable. If I recall it correctly, it was, "Well, it just seemed appropriate to us." Doesn't seem appropriate to me. In fact, I would like to ask that we postpone this vote to see if Mr. Cozort can work with the town to get more of a commitment before we vote on it. I don't think I can be disabused of the notion. I don't think that another two weeks is gonna set us irrevocably behind schedule as far as being on the warrant would be my only technical concern. And, you know, Mike was kind of hopeful, sort of, the last time, unless there's more. I can't support the budget as is. As I say, I won't vote against it, because I think the things that we do have in it are good and important. But we had to cut a lot of things that were also good and important.
Zona?
My comment, and it goes from working with the school budget for ten years, and also being part of the four years where we cut budgets every year, and we took some serious chunks out of our budget. I also worked in the district when we had great relationships with the town, and I also worked with the town when we didn't have, when the school did not have strong relationships. Through Mike's leadership, he has rebuilt relationships that needed mending. And I, I hear what you're saying, Steve, but I think if we go back, not wanting to vote on the budget that everybody has worked hard on and had lots of discussions separate to us, because that's, it's our staff and our principals who build the budget, and our superintendent that brings it to us. I think we serve to send, especially at this time where we're looking for a new superintendent, that I think it's a message I wouldn't be comfortable sending to the town. They have said, and they did say, that they, if there were additional funds, that they would consider. The town had been very supportive of our school, and so I, I couldn't support that, Steve, at this point. I would, I would support going forward with the budget that we have. That's my thought.
Okay, I've been involved with thirty of these, of various types. I think we got the intermediate school. I think the budget isn't everything we want. But the budget is, I think, generous to us. So, motion's been made, seconded, discussed.
Did we, I don't...
Yeah, made a motion to adopt.
You did, okay. We need to make a motion, right? Yeah, we...
You need to read.
Read the motion.
Vote to adopt and authorize the school committee fiscal year 2020 budget education appropriation on its Article Eight. On motion made and seconded, it was voted to recommend thirty million, six thirty-six, six forty-two for the fiscal year 2020 Nantucket Education Public Appropriation, Article Eight of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting of Taxpayers. The public school total budget appropriation is recommended at thirty million, one thirty-six, six thirty, six forty-two. Twenty-five million, oh fifty-five, oh sixty-two for payroll, and five million, eighty-one, five eighty for operating expenses. An additional five hundred thousand for the community school appropriation for payroll, and to authorize use of the school department accounts as listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Present.
Same thing.
Okay. Moving on. Vote to approve the donation to NHS from Samantha Horton to the woodshop program of the amount of five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve donation to CPS from Friends of Nantucket Public Schools for the seventh grade Camp Cody trip in the amount of a thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to CPS from the Cape Cod Five Foundation to Ryan Millen for educational mini grant in the amount of four hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to CPS from Peter and Stacey McKeckern for the eighth grade Washington DC trip in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the donation to CPS from Friends of Nantucket Public Schools for the eighth grade Washington DC trip in the amount of a thousand dollars.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve the field trip for the fourth grade, Boston Museum of Science in Boston, May second and third, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve the January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The February fourth to seventh public interview meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And February eighth, two thousand nineteen, public hearing, debriefing of superintendent candidates minute, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mike?
Okay, enrollment for February one, two thousand nineteen represents an increase of ten students across the district from the January numbers. And you have before you, I think, the indication that there are five more students at Nantucket Elementary School, three more at NIS, while CPS remained the same, and the high school increased by two. And then you also have the entries and withdrawals that, that you asked for. That's, that's a little larger than I might have expected in January, if you compare that to years past. But, you know, the principals can speak to any questions that you might have about the numbers of students coming in.
Any questions on that?
And then the self-evaluation, I'm not sure that we have all of them in, so I think I'll pass over that part of my report.
Okay, those are the group that happened to put them in.
Do your homework.
I'll do it. Well, we've had a few other things on our plates, but...
Mine was in by deadline.
I returned mine.
Nobody likes a goody-two-shoes.
I just admitted that I didn't. But where is she?
I will.
Yeah, boy.
Pardon?
Yes, please.
Well, are we putting this on the agenda then for the next meeting?
Well, if we get them returned, yeah.
Within a couple of days.
And then, as to on the horizon, I had a question mark on March fifth or March twelfth, because I wasn't sure if you might be doing site visits, that, for a week in March. I would imagine at this point you'll stay with the March fifth, as originally scheduled. Would love to have the culinary arts team come, maybe not the whole presentation, but maybe convince them to make the Crepe Suzettes, the Suzette for the school committee. And typically, we have a representative of the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools come by and possibly snack. So we'll ask Michelle if she can get a representative of snack here for that meeting. I haven't had anything confirmed from Kim Horn, so I'm not sure that that will move on. And then sometimes at the first or second meeting in March, we've had the dropout rate report. So John and I will check to see if that is in, and I believe it is, so we should be able to put that on that...
So we've had a lot of success, and it would be really nice to have the swim team, if it could just come to the meeting, the boys and the girls.
I think that'd be wonderful. Yeah, awesome.
Would that be all right?
I'm, I'm sure we can...
Through the chair, Logan.
Could I, could the chair ask if we could do it on the second or...
It's fine with me.
At the nineteenth?
You just don't want to share the Crepe Suzette, do you? No, I know, that's fine, that's fine. I just didn't want to leave it too long after the fact, but if that works with schedules, I'm good with that. Is that...
Sure.
Okay.
Subcommittee reports?
Quick, quick, sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The workshops are doing this evaluation tool. Let's, remind me what that is?
Well, you typically have to have that done by March thirtieth. And so oftentimes, you had a workshop to, to do that, and then report out at the last March meeting. So that is, so you could either have a March twelfth workshop and then report out on the nineteenth, or you, you could do something on the twenty-sixth of March.
Is workshop, um, public meeting?
It's a public meeting, but it tends to be...
And we usually have it off-site, don't we?
Um, you usually have it in a conference room or...
Okay. So, yeah, so I'm, I, the reason I ask that, because I know it's due March thirty-first, so can we say tonight that we can have it on the twelfth?
Yeah, because it takes a couple weeks at least to put it together. It's pretty involved, so...
But can I, we talked last year, after the fact, that I know Mike gets feedback from the principals, and that had come to us. And I think we agreed last year that we thought it should go to Mike to then send to us. Does that sound, so is that all right with you if we not have them go to, well, they can go to Logan to go to Mike and then...
They're gonna go through Mike to come to us.
And then we need two people that were willing to go through that and compile that for the group. And I'm happy I didn't do it last year, so I'm happy to do it this year.
I did it last year, and it was fine.
You can talk with me then, Zona?
Just to confirm, we're gonna have the workshop on the twelfth at six o'clock?
You, you've done...
You, you've done that sometimes, is it four or five?
I'd say four.
But that's, that's up to the school.
We don't want to do it at that late.
It was better, I think, when we're, yeah.
4 o'clock.
Location to be designated.
Pauline and Zona will compile them together. So would you mind sending us that, the document, Logan, on that, on the review? And then meanwhile, you'll get your reviews out to your principals. Can I, while we're still on Horizon, may I ask consideration? I know Donna Johnson's been working a lot this year with the elementary and NIS team. Could we ask her, would it be all right, like, to ask Donna to come, you're here, to come maybe with some of her teachers that she's been working with, so we can hear about the work that they've been doing?
Sure.
Would you be willing to do that? That would be great. I don't, I, it's a lot of teachers, probably, right? So I don't, I mean, I would ask you to, it's somebody, one person from every grade.
So are you looking for that for March 19th?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No.
All right, can we, like, move Kim, because we haven't heard from her, to the 19th for now? Just to kind of even out?
Sure.
Because we're going to have, if we have the swim teams present, we may or may not, we don't know yet. They're checking, right?
The second, the 19th is what.
They decided?
Been suggested, right?
Right, but we're also going to do our self-evaluations on the.
19th.
5th, right?
On the 5th.
On the 5th, yeah.
On the 5th, sorry. Yeah, okay.
Okay, what's a self-evaluation?
We evaluate ourselves as school committee.
I don't need to do that.
But you should, Henry, because I'd like to hear from you.
I mean, I don't get to.
I don't get to. I think we should change the rules on that.
Okay, any subcommittee reports?
I'm just kidding.
Henry, what are the students up to other than dropping off?
Um, we're, the student council is working on orchestrating a couple of events. We're working on getting a dance together. Um, we, we're trying to do a St. Patty's Day dance. We're sort of in conflict with the musical right now, so we might have to change where we put that. We're also working towards the end of the year. We've had a lot of success in the school with, like, these little athletic competitions. We're doing, like, badminton and volleyball. Um, we're trying towards the end of the year, when it gets warmer, to do some full school activity outdoors with, like, a bunch of small competitions, whether it be between grades or between small teams.
Badminton include adults, administrators, et cetera, just kids?
We can, we can make it.
I ask because the middle school ran one a few years ago, and it was a great event.
Or like, or, um, some of the ones that Ms. Davidson has been putting on, like, the badminton does include faculty student teams, which is good. Other than that, um, a lot of, a lot of college decisions are coming back. We're going to try in the next newspaper issue to, um, short, sort of display some of the places people are getting in. Also, seniors are pretty anxious about golf club decision. Top 10 is coming out soon, so there will be something on the top 10 in the next issue Veritas as well.
One's out.
I'm not sure if there's a concrete date. We weren't given a concrete date, but soon.
Something I'd like to announce, if I can. I put flyers up, out at the front there. Debbie Irving is coming here on March 11th. I bought some books, and I didn't buy them, I bought them with me. Uh, Nantucket Lighthouse School is giving these out for free. She wrote a book, Waking Up White. I've started reading this. I think it's an important conversation for our community to have. She, um, I, I can already tell it's going to be a very interesting read. And she's coming on the 11th. There is an educators forum, I think, at 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock. I, I was told that everybody got sent, all the schools were sent a flyer, and so hopefully it will go out to your staff. And then the community forum, I believe, is at the Athenaeum at 6 o'clock, but it's on the flyer there. You know, I, you know, when we were talking through district goals, and one of the questions I had, or I wanted to see in district goals, was an increase in our minority students, and how could we measure it and how could we gauge it? One of the questions that we asked our superintendent search was how could you retain and attract teachers, minority teachers? And I think my answer to that question would have been, once we are secure, not only Nantucket, but nationwide, that we're encouraging students from kindergarten all the way through, that they can be teachers, they can be principals, and they can be superintendents. And that was one of the reasons why I'd asked Dr. Buck to send us the breakdown of our AP classes and 504 students and EL students and minority students, because I think I would like to see our district, and a form of measuring our district, is if we know we have 30% of EL students, we should be looking at at least 30% of students in AP classes and, um, honors classes. And so that we're having the conversations early on with our kids to say, these are rigorous goals and you can set them. So I just think it's an important conversation. You've heard it from me before, but I just think it's an important conversation for our community. And I know we've got teachers who are amazing, who do set the bar high for every single student. But I think if we want to raise our test scores, which we have that as a district goal, um, one of the ways that we can do it is by ensuring that in all of our high academic programs, we've got a cross diversity of our students. So I'm off my soapbox. Thank you.
Tim, just for a moment, if I may. Henry's mention of the golf club scholarship takes me back just a snitch to the scholarships in the subcommittee line. Are those handled by the guidance department? Who makes the decisions? What's the process? Is it ongoing?
There are two scholarships, the.
Is it Evelyn McGlaughlin?
McGlaughlin and what's the other one?
Oh, Harry Gordon.
No, not Harry.
Gordon is, is part of the.
McGlaughlin, and I forget the other one, but they are school committee decisions, although it used to be, we did them in 30 minutes on a blackboard, but now with FAFSA forms and everything else, it has become infinitely more complicated, so we do require the assistance of the guidance department.
And are there others than those that we're not involved in?
So, if I may, um, there are two scholarships that the school committee specifically votes on. There are a number of scholarships through the guidance office that, um, a, a committee of teachers, administrators participate and, and make decisions. And then there are another set of scholarships through the community foundation that are voted on separately. So I think in total, John, you can correct me, but $500,000 to $600,000 of scholarships annually are given out in our school district from one of those three pools. But the community foundation might have up to, I don't know, 15 different scholarships. And, so is that your question?
Yeah. I ask in part because I was approached by what shall remain an unnamed entity who offered a scholarship, and nobody applied. And I, I wanted to make sure that all the students were aware of all the scholarships, so that no money slips through the cracks. I can mention those to guidance, maybe?
Guidance has been pretty aggressive, but.
All right, no, I'll, I'll.
That has happened.
Mention it to them.
Well, this, to me, this is where it comes in, that kids aren't meeting with guidance often enough.
Yeah.
Well, they also have to do the paperwork.
I know, but sometimes they need reminding and pushing. They don't have it at home. This is where they get it. So I just don't want kids to miss out on opportunities, and they do.
Yeah, so last week, guidance held a scholarship assembly for seniors, so they are doing their best to reach out to us. I also do believe that, um, so there's information available on the website. Veritas can also try to give a better heads up.
I think that's a good idea. And Jen, I'll catch you when we're done and tell you who I was talking about.
Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.